Spring 2021 Retreat was hopefully originally scheduled back in January, got pushed back to February, and I really appreciate everybody's patience with this rescheduling to try to accommodate the schedules of as many people as possible. I want to start the meeting by just doing some very brief introductions, just so everybody knows who is who that's here, and I'll just call on everybody. I'm just going to go across my gray bunch square, but all I'm looking for is your name and what is your role in this meeting and perhaps how long you've been in that role. So I'll start us out. I'm Stacy Wild. I am very humbled to be the Chair of the Planning Commission right now, and I have served on the Planning Commission since 2016 in Johnson City. And Jamie, you are up next.
Jamie Pavlich, been on the Planning Commission. I think this is my eighth year and really excited to be here and look forward to working with everybody.
All right, Chris?
I'm Chris Degenhart. I have been on the Planning Commission since July of 2019 and picked up leadership of this Long Term Planning Committee in the beginning of 2020.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm Bob Cooper. I'm Vice Chair, and I think, I think this is my sixth year on the, on the Commission.
All right, Benjamin?
Hey, everybody. I'm Benjamin Whitfield, and I believe this is my third year. I believe I came on right around when Chris did, 2019.
All right, Tembra?
I'm Summer Otters, and now I know why I feel so stupid most of the time on this committee, because I'm the rookie. I think I've only been here for maybe four months, five months, something like that. So, yeah, I got a lot to learn.
Never stupid. We always appreciate everyone's input. So Jenny?
Jenny Brock. I am the Johnson City Commission representative on the Planning Commission. I have served another term several years ago, and I've been on the City Commission since 2013. So, wow, a long time ago. So, seen a lot of things go on in this city that, that are good.
Wow.
Yes, I've been on the Planning Commission before. Three years ago, I went off. So I'm a local architect and I'm glad to be back on.
Nice to have you back.
War Eagle.
Sorry, I have to wear my hats till my cat doesn't scratch my head.
Joe, you're up next, and you're muted.
This is my first Zoom meeting, and so you'll have to excuse me for not knowing how to do that. I'm here as the peanut gallery for the purposes of this meeting, but I was once a member of the Planning Commission back in 2012. So, and now serve on the City Commission.
All right, Preston? You're muted, Preston.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Preston Mitchell, Director of Development Services. I am your Department Head and I guess Principal Liaison to the Board. And as soon as we get the Planner position backfilled, you will have a more permanent liaison to the Board. But for right now, at staff level, Ms. Whitney Hodges, who you will meet here in a minute, and Mr. Will Ryder are really kind of your co-liaisons to the Board.
All right, Whitney?
I'm Whitney Hodges. I'm a planning consultant. Been here maybe for three months, four months.
Nicole?
Hi. I'm Nicole. I am the Administrative Coordinator for Development Services. I've been with the city. This is my fifth year, and I am the Recording Secretary for the Planning Commission. And also, if you need it, I'll try and get it, girl.
If you need anything, go to Nicole first. That's the secret.
I'll try. I'll try.
All right, Lawrence?
Lawrence Perry. I've been with the city since 2005. Work under Philip and Zola. He used to work under Alan Cantrell before he retired. Brandon, Patial, and I'll be handling the duties as far as competing with the Planning Commission and trying to answer any questions where it's related to public works.
All right, Will?
Hi, I'm Will Ryder. I'm then, I'll have been with the city three years in May. I'm the Development Coordinator and the Code Enforcement Supervisor, Primary Liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Dwelling Standards and Review.
All right, Clay?
Hey, Clay Hickson, Planning Commission for, I think this is my third year floating above in the clouds, downtown Johnson City right now.
And Pete?
Pete is, I'm speaking for Pete. He is on a computer. He texted me and said he's on a computer that does not have a microphone. So he's in the listen mode only.
Got it. All right. All right, well, welcome, everybody. Before we get started, I just kind of wanted to go over what my goals for this meeting are and what I'm hoping our expected outcome will be. I will be on Cloud Nine if we actually get this accomplished. So it's lofty goals, but the first one is I really want to try to reach a consensus on what the Commission's desire is in terms of focusing more on proactive planning and policy development. And a little background of that, until the bridge, well, until the Long Range Planning Commission took on the Bridge Plan in the last year, I will admit, as long as I've served on the Commission, and I probably speak for most of us, I had never read the Johnson City Comprehensive Plan word for word, line for line. And if you tackle that, it is a lofty goal in and of itself. It'll take you quite a while to do. But in going through that exercise with the Bridge Plan Committee, I think many of us became enlightened to what is really in that document, and many of us got a lot of ideas about, hey, wow, this stuff is all here. Why aren't we doing this? What could we do to facilitate some of these things? And so that started a lot of talk amongst commissioners about what could our Planning Commission be? Do we need to be what we always have been, or at least since I've served, you know, serving more in a transactional type of role? Or could we take on some additional duties? And so one of my goals of this meeting, and I'm going to open it up for discussion in just a little bit, is to see where everybody else falls on that spectrum, because I don't want to lead us in a direction that we don't have consensus to go in, but I'm more than willing to take on the role of leading us if that does become the consensus of the committee. So that's one thing I want to find out. The second goal I have is to identify what type of specific change activities would be needed to achieve those goals. So whether we choose to remain acting in our current capacity, whether we choose to try to expand our role and capacity, what do we need to do to make that happen? And ideally, I'd like to see us even set some very short-term goals and some longer-range goals. Maybe what could we do in the first couple of months? What could we hope to accomplish by the end of the year? And what would we love to see done over the course of the next three to five years? And then finally, the third thing is we are up for, it's typically at this time of year that we assign the Planning Commissioners to the different working Regional Planning Commission Subcommittee. We have three traditional Subcommittee. I'd like to address those threes, see whether they're still appropriate, whether we want to change them up a little in terms of their name and/or focus. And then hopefully, by the end of this meeting, if we don't make specific assignments of Commissioners to the meetings, at least have everybody thinking about that so that that can be accomplished at our regular scheduled meeting next Tuesday. So those are the three goals that I kind of have in mind. And does anybody have questions about those? All right, then I'm going to jump right into kind of that first goal, which was figuring out where does everybody fall on the scale? And it goes to the first slide from our survey, which really measured the desire to change. And the question that was asked was, how satisfied are you with the impact of the Regional Planning Commission as it currently operates? And we came in dead center, but interestingly to me, if you actually look at the data, half of us are somewhat dissatisfied and half of us are somewhat satisfied. So that tells-
But nobody, please, dissatisfied, which is good.
That's good, yeah. But that tells me that, you know, not everybody is either familiar enough with what, you know, some people are talking about moving towards. Not everybody, you know, feels the same. And so I really do want to open this one up for discussion and kind of gauge everybody's, you know, feelings of what, what do you want to see us doing in terms of the Planning Commission? So I'm going to open that just for a minute for anybody who has a specific comment, and then I'll kind of lead you into some of the desire to change things that I envision in the next few slides.
What I take from that slide is it's a glass half-full and a glass half-empty. I'm very satisfied with things that we do. I just think there's a lot more things that we could do in terms of analysis or consideration or research that could have an additional impact beyond what we do today. So it's not that we need to stop doing things, but we need, perhaps we could add some things.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this one?
I think to piggyback on what Chris was saying, I think it would be nice to be included in what other areas of our government are doing in terms of capital improvement programs, so that we can look and see if that really fits our long-range plan.
Okay.
Where it is in the planning process, so that, you know, we just have an idea of what, what those goals and directives are so that we know what they are.
Okay.
Instead of having them happen afterwards.
All right, thanks, Jamie. I'm looking down because I'm taking notes as y'all, as y'all are commenting, so. Anybody else have specific feedback on this one?
I would just ask a question of Preston. And if we benchmarked other cities where regional planning commissions took a stronger role, are there ideal groups out there that we would want to really dig into more to see how they are taking that value-added role in their cities?
So, no, we have not in the, in the time that I've been here, I've not identified benchmarking data points that we've done in the past here in Johnson City. I know just myself personally, over the last 22 years in managing or liaising previous planning boards, they have a role in, it is, it is, it is reasonable and customary for them to have a role in the capital improvement planning process as an advisory capacity, and then also to be briefed upon those things, such as through the budget process or through the Department Head, and to be kept up to date. And then in terms of, of advising and submitting specific recommendations, typically those would be submitted either through the liaison, where it would then track from myself up to the CEO or the, the City Manager of the organization, because the City Manager obviously is working with you all at the City Commission level to put together the CIP and, and the CIB, or make those recommendations directly from the Advisory Board through you all through to the City Commission. And so that's been my, my past experience, and there are, there are ways which we can measure really quite easily when and how the CIP projects are being started and completed or are underway. And those are, those are Gantt charts or other types of Excel spreadsheets that we could provide to the Planning Commission on a regular basis so that they're not hearing about it after the fact. But yes, there are, there are benchmarking measurements. There are ways in which they can become more engaged, but just recognizing that they are ultimately an advisory body to you all and, and to the City Manager.
Yeah, I would, I would just end with a comment. Stacy, you brought up the comprehensive plan, and I, I know if he could talk, he was, he was here and very much a part of that. But the Planning Commission at that time was very much a part of the, working on the comprehensive plan. So their role stepped out of that just transitional, transactional to, you know, visionary, really. So, so that's, you know, there's a past experience there. And I think in updating the comprehensive plans, I think, you know, the opportunity is certainly going to be there.
Okay.
Preston, may I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Are comprehensive plans typically stewarded by regional planning commissions? Or is that, is that variable across city to city?
They are. Let me see if I understand exactly the way you're asking the question. First of all, we are unique in that we are a regional planning commission. The majority of the planning commissions throughout the state are municipal planning commissions, either municipal or, or county. So we are unique in that we have a regional planning commission. Regardless, whether you are a regional one, county, or a city, or a municipal planning commission, it is, it is, it is not unusual for those entities to be the initiators and arbiters of the, of, of all comp planning. Now, keep in mind that comp planning is different than CIP planning. The, the comprehensive plan is your policy document. That's your large, that's your umbrella document. That's the, that's the vision of the city, where the City Commission and you all believe that we need to be, want to be, and how can we get there? And how can we do it in a fiscally responsible way? And then below that umbrella, so kind of coming down the umbrella pole, you have these other sub documents. One of those would be the, the CIP and the Capital Improvement Plan and the Capital Improvement Budget, that is, that responds to the CIP.
Thank you. That helps a lot.
Sure.
Stacy, I'm curious, do any of our members or anybody on this call have experience with, with this vision that we're presently struggling with? In other words, an actual working, working group that is proactive in this type of arena?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I think as we get into some of the slides and we get into our discussion of ways that we'd like to change, then we could measure whether we have experience amongst ourselves or amongst staff. But I don't know how to answer your question specifically. Can anybody else?
I'm not being very clear, and I apologize. What I'm asking is, has anybody had experience with a group that was in fact proactive as opposed to reactive or, or in addition to being reactive?
Outside of regional planning, do you mean, or within regional-
No, no, no. In, in, in the, in the arena that we're in and, and in the environment we're, we're presently operating in.
So are you, just out of curiosity, are you asking about the board members? And, and that kind of ties back to Dr. Wild's comment about maybe later you all identifying those who, who have a certain passion and a certain desire for a certain level of engagement at a staff level. You have myself and Ms. Hodges, I know specifically, have, I believe both of us together have roughly 45 years or so of both long-range and current planning development. And then Mr. Ryder brings in his recent experience. But Ms. Hodges and I both have many, many years' experience in the P-Mon area.
Bob, I think that your question kind of tags off what I was trying to get to as well, and that's have we benchmarked other cities where the planning commissions are taking a, a role as, as we're about to discuss here.
Right.
And it'd be good if we could, we could find, you know, do, do some benchmarking and learn from them.
Right.
So at this point, we, we believe we might be plowing new ground?
I, I don't think so. I think this board originally was set up to do exactly what we're talking about doing. And I think it probably performed that way back in the 70s and 80s. I think just over time that, you know, we grew quickly. So it became more of a, when we were starting to annex more, and this is just my opinion from, you know, from a long time ago. It just seems like when annexations started to be very proactive and trying to reach that level of 55,000, everything was kind of, it's kind of like throwing the baby out with the bathwater in terms of their comprehensive plan. That's when they redid the comprehensive plan, I think, eight, late 80s, early 90s. And, you know, it became a document, but it just kind of sat on the shelf then. And we, that's where the, the board became more transactional. But I think there are other cities out there that are doing this, and regional planning, not necessarily regional planning boards, but, you know, in order to, to have a comprehensive plan, you have to measure it and make sure that your growth is in line with that, whether it's acquiring new land, is it the appropriate use? What should go there? How should the zoning look at it? Instead of trying to do it on the back end, kind of look at all that thing in a progressive way instead of the other way, of reactive.
I think something else to recognize is that, is that you will always, and, and this is just by law, you will, you will always be transactional because you, you have a legal obligation to the general statutes to process subdivision plat requests from preliminary plats to final plats, and et cetera, et cetera. You also have a statutory obligation to advise the local elected body on legislative matters, rezonings, text amendments, things like that. So those are your legal obligations. So you will always be transactional in that perspective. But outside of, out, outside of that, I, I agree with, with Jamie. I think that, and, and see, the other, I guess, is that from a staff perspective, we, we're also a fairly new department in that, you know, new meaning the tenure of the people who have been in this particular department. Now, several of us come with significant experience, but our department alone is fairly new. And so what I don't want to do is, I don't want to use this conversation as an opportunity to, to bash any past staff member that failed to update the comp plan when it should have been updated. I think we need to recognize that, yes, it is unfortunate that the comp plan and the elements in the comp plan were not updated when they should have been. You should generally be updating your comp plan every six to seven years, no matter what the horizon. You should be updating your comp plan about every six to seven years. And that doesn't require major updates. What we're about to embark on is going to be a major update. And the reason why it's going to be a major update is because we haven't had those interim updates. And so with, upon my arrival in the end of 18, one of the very first conversations that I had with City Manager, and we had a great conversation about, he said, Preston, comp plan's out of date. What are you going to do? And I said, well, Mr. Peterson, I said, we have a, we have a, our next 10 years census coming up. And so the last thing I want to do is step into a comp plan update right before we get new census data.
Preston, I, I think what you're saying is very important and very beneficial. And I don't, I don't want to cut you off, but I want to kind of keep us moving forward too. I think what you're saying is a great segue into that next slide that we have that kind of shows where, yes, our current role is more of a near-term transactional body, where our focus has been primarily on land use and subdivision review. And for whatever reason, we've gotten to that point of where we are. And I appreciate very much your saying that, yes, we will always have that role. That is going to be something we are tasked with doing, and that needs to remain a very critical portion of our function. But the question becomes, do we want to expand beyond our familiar transactional duties and help achieve the fulfillment of a vision set forth in the strategic and comprehensive plans? And so the vision that some people have is that we return to a more dual-functionality, where our role is both transactional and strategic, and where we can perhaps become more proactive instead of just reactive. And maybe that will allow us to continually update the next comprehensive plan. I mean, I recognize the next comprehensive plan is going to be a large task in and of itself. But maybe by doing this, we may set the stage for continued review of the comprehensive plan in the future and continued updates so we don't find the Planning Commission in this situation 20 years from now. And so that kind of brings us into the next question, and I'm on Slide 7, if anybody's following along on their own, which is, is there a desire to change amongst the Planning Commission? Now, the question in the survey just asked, can you please identify your enthusiasm and bandwidth for expanding the focus and changing the impact of the Regional Planning Commission? And from the answers we got, it does appear that people are quite willing or able to want to see some changes occur. Am I reading that correctly? Does anybody have comments about that specifically or want to expand on that? Kind of good there? Okay, well then, I'm sorry, with Benjamin, were you going to say something?
No, I, I think it's pretty self-evident. I mean, 4.4, there's a strong urge, I think, in the commissioners to, to take on a bigger role. And, yeah, I think, I think there's almost a mandate there. I think it's pretty exciting.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to move on to the next slide, which is 8 in my slide deck. And this one asked for people to rate the saying, "I feel that the Regional Planning Commission is currently too transactionally focused, i.e. approval of zoning changes and reviewing building plats." And we do have a range of responses. They tend to be more towards strong agreement and agreement. So again, my interpretation of that is that I'm sensing a desire amongst commissioners, not that we're ever going to get away from our transactional role, because I think Preston said that very eloquently and very correctly. That is always going to be a primary function of the Regional Planning Commission. But I interpret this slide and the results of it as telling me that people don't want that to be the exclusive role of the Planning Commission. Am I correct in that interpretation from those of you who answered this?
Yes.
Is that what people are seeing?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Coach.
Okay. Well, then that leads us into the next one, which is Slide number nine, which said, "I feel that the Regional Planning Commission should be more strategically focused." In other words, advising City Council on implementation of the Bridge Plan and Strategic Plan. And again, the, the responses that I'm seeing lead me to the same conclusion I had on the previous slide, that people want us to take more of a dual role than a current singular role.
To me, I think that, that question, I don't necessarily think it should be the Planning Commission's role. I think it should be a joint role. I think the, the two commissions need to work together to make sure whatever that strategic plan is matches up with what the comprehensive plan is adopted to. So the, the pathways are going in the same direction because if you're not going in the same direction, then there, there's no sense for a plan. Does that make sense? So as we're, as we're creating that five-year, 10-year, 15, 20-year plan, as new capital improvements come up, where does that fit in that master plan? So I think, I think the two boards need to work together and say, okay, from a City Commission level, this is where we want to go. And that needs to be communicated to us in hopes that we can say, okay, yes, it matches up with our comprehensive plan. That's all, you know, that's, that's all of my thoughts on that. And as an advisory role, we say- And as an advisory role, we say, we think that's a great idea, or we could say, well, it's not really what the plan says. So that's my two cents. Am I muted?
No.
I was gonna just add to that, the, the whole term strategically focused is a fairly blurry and ill-defined term. And I think that's where we need to spend additional time in this workshop to talk about what the strategically focused means.
Oh, you all are just giving me the best segues into the next slide.
You'd think we rehearsed this.
Really? All right, well, the next question did ask for ways for the regional planning commission to function differently. And I can barely see the print on my computer because I have two screens open, our Brady Bunch screen as well as my PowerPoint. But I believe that we listed some ways and we also asked for people to add additional ways. And so I think this is going to be the perfect opportunity to do what Chris just suggested. Is what do we really define as strategically focused? What do we really want to do? And I'm going to open that one back up to all the commissioners as well as, um, staff and city commission folks that are on this call. What would be, maybe I should ask it this way, maybe everybody could say, what would the one or two things that they would like to see us do? You know, in addition to what we're currently doing, be, maybe that's a better way to word it.
Oh, I, I can take a first crack at that one. I, I think on the response to the second one, um, advising city council. On implementation for the bridge plan and the strategic plan. I think for me, that gets me really excited and that gets me kind of jumping out of bed in the morning to think about. Um, the, the way these two fantastic documents, if you take the time to read through both of them, and they're chock full of fantastic ideas. And trying to find a way to. Better utilize city council's time and better utilize development services time and everyone else's time, and how can we help? And we're this, we're this body. Uh, you know, it's kind of within our wheelhouse. How can we jump aboard and help make what city council wants to happen, happen? And how we make the city, push the city forward. So for me, that's, that's the one that really gets me.
Okay, so I'm hearing service and advisory council to city commission as a primary focus. All right, others?
Well, I'm gonna call out the one specifically that was the most popular item, and that's engage with partner organizations throughout the city. I think as I've looked back on my tenure on the planning commission. We might have individuals that come to the board meetings to represent interests or, or answer questions. But I don't really think we have what I would call, uh, an open relationship, a dynamic relationship, a give and take, a conversation. And, and I think it's, it's, it's a huge opportunity for us to build bridges amongst, from the regional planning commission out to other bodies within the city. To have, be able to share conversations. And because the regional planning commission is not going to be in a, in a role to be able to advocate for or. Transactionally engage to get things to happen. A lot of the things that need to happen out of the bridge plan and the strategy plan. Are going to be the purview of individual commissions outside the regional planning commission. So if we can sort of help to facilitate those conversations, ask questions, serve as a founding board, I think we can all move forward more, more. Effectively.
I, I would strongly agree with what Chris just said. You know, when I've talked to several of you on an individual basis. You know, I, I hear excitement in people's voices about, you know, man, I'd really like to see us get that Greenway plan, you know, firmed up. Or man, I'd really like to see, you know, downtown development, you know, moving forward even more at a quicker pace. And I'd like to see this, I'd like to see that. And those to me are the great ideas and the things that I think we as a commission should be talking about and perhaps. You know, maybe even prioritizing, what are some of the things that we think should be pushed to the forefront? And advising the city commission certainly on our thoughts. But those are not things that we as a planning commissioner necessarily going to be able to accomplish. Those are going to be the purview of other committees that exist in the city. And so I do think it is really important that we create stronger partnerships with other organizations.
It may be as simple as establishing liaison relationships between individuals on the planning commission and another commissioner board. Just to have, have a person who's got face value and, and contact and. And that, and build some kind of an established relationship where you can call somebody up and say, hey, can you help me understand this? Or, hey, here's a question that we're facing. And historically and traditionally, that's gone through staff. And I think that's, that's damaged the relationship potential of the, of the planning commission. And I don't mean that as a, as a criticism of staff in any way at all.
I appreciate you adding, adding that little bit there at the end, Commissioner Dagenhart. I was curious, I wanted to see if you could maybe. Expand a little bit on the concern on, on how information being disseminated from the board through staff to other boards. Is, um, is a concern?
I'll give an example, a real world example that I've experienced in the last week or two. An individual in the community came to me and started asking me question, questions about some TIF, uh, tax incremental funding. Issues were being addressed and being raised by the J C D A. And I honestly didn't know much about it, so I just made myself at home and got in contact with individuals on J C D A. And asked the questions and collected information. And I, it wa- it, it was simply an information question. And it wasn't necessarily the purview of the regional planning commission, but a question came to me as a commissioner. So I just reached out to my personal connections who happened to be on the J C D A. And just asked the, an innocent question, collected information and gave it back to the individual who asked me.
Sure.
That happened only because I reached out to a personal connection. But if we have those connections sort of built into the planning commission, I think it would make things more, work more smoothly. And we could become a more effective body.
I mean, Chris, uh, there's already kind of a model for that, you know, Jenny, of course, is representing the city council. And I'm representing, I'm on the historical zoning. But I agree, I think if we had a liaison that worked with J C D A would be fantastic, or some of the other planning commissions around in our area. That I've, I've never spoken to, and I would love to hear what they're doing and what they're working on.
Joe or Jenny, has, has there ever been any type of, I, I don't know. A coming together of the chairs of the different city committees and commissions, maybe for just, uh. You know, what's going on, check in type of thing. I know, Joe, you recently. Put together a group that you said you were going to try to get to meet monthly, but it wasn't necessarily just different city committees and commissions. But.
You'll have to refresh my memory. I think I've missed that meeting. We, in the past, um, I know there have been events, um, really as much targeted at. Those who volunteer to serve, but there have been events at Memorial Park or at the Carnegie Hotel. Where a luncheon event was held and, and the different, uh, boards and commissions would give a summary statement. It's been a couple of years since we did that. Of course, the last year's been lost to pandemic, but it was probably. Jenny, do you recall when we would have done that last two years or three years ago?
It's probably been at least three years, I think, yeah.
And I think the last time was at Memorial Park. You know, the, the, the truth of it is, the example Chris gave, there are always going to be. Granular details in other people's. Commissions and committees that you're going to have to ask about. And I, I don't think, I didn't hear Chris saying he was expecting that. The, the caution that I would have, and, and it might be helpful to hear from Preston. But to me, a planning commission is about, about land use and. And there are other things that go into a city's long range planning. Whether it be greenways or parks and recreation, or, or even the development of other infrastructure. That may run parallel to land use considerations, but maybe. In someone else's area of primary responsibility. So for example, the question about downtown redevelopment. That's something that's been tasked to the J C D A now. Uh, I, I like the idea of potentially having a connection between the planning commission and the J C D A. But we want to make sure we aren't. Stepping on somebody else's toes in pursuit of a greater degree of involvement.
I want to echo, I just want to speak to that. I think there's, we mentioned later on in the presentation barriers to overcome, and that's to feel. Make sure that we don't leave the impression that we're trying to mind other committees or commissions business. That's not what we're about, that's not what I'm about. But I think that more open lines of communications, established lines of communications for sharing information. And answering questions and raising questions, I think it could be beneficial.
So I, I can, I, I'll throw a real world example. So. You know, Joe, you brought up the Parks and Rec. So the Parks and Rec has been tasked with to find new ballfields to replace those at Optimus Park. That's been going on for a few years now. So as they're going through that land discovery phase. They never came to the planning department or to, as, as far as I know, and said. Okay, what does the master plan say? Where are the areas within our city, within our boundaries, where we could put these particular fields? Instead, what's happened is we've just gone out, identified some vacant land, and now we have to either rezone it. Reappropriate it, or in some ways, just figure out what to do and how to make it work. So part of the planning process is, you know, we've, we've done all these plans, we've paid for them. And we've invested the time and the resources, but yet we don't ever look at them. So that's just one example of if, if the two systems work together and say, this is our capital improvement. This is what we have to accomplish in the next two years. We could have helped identify land through G I S and said, okay, these are the plots of land that fit within our comprehensive plan. That a park would actually look good in. And would fit within the scope of our business. And it could kind of streamline that process. Would you, do you understand that particular point? Does that make any sense?
I think that's a great example, Jamie.
So it's just things like that. I mean, it's, you know, what is the land use? Okay, great. Where, where are some of, some of these opportunities within our current geography? Especially since we have to focus on henfield at this particular point. Where it could fit and how do we adopt it into the plan and make the plan still work? So that's just a couple of instances and, or one instance in particular, but I can name several. But I think that's how the planning commission can work and kind of take off a lot of the burden off the city commission. As far as, okay, we gotta do all this work, the work could be done for you and that, that way you could approve it or disapprove it or instill a bias on it. That's, 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 that's my point on it.
And I, and I think on that topic specifically. The, the burden associated with athletic infrastructure like you're talking about is less about finding a place to do it. And more about finding the fifteen or twenty million dollars to get it done. And so part of, so we, we have gone through that process to some degree. In the acquisition of the acreage adjacent to Wing Deer Park. And the commission spent quite a bit of time looking at that and unpacking it. And it was done in conjunction with a, a broader stated purpose of developing a single place for. For diamonds and rectangles so that you could host tournaments and so forth. And doing that at Wing Deer Park allowed us to piggyback on infrastructure we had already paid for there rather than having to go out. And so the commission and the Parks and Rec Board a number of years ago traveled to Greenville, South Carolina and Spartanburg and visited facilities. And we've identified a place that can happen. It's on the property the city now owns adjacent to Wing Deer Park. The, the challenge is having enough dollars become available. In, in the general fund to allow us to do that as quickly. And I, I, I feel like I can say this confidently on behalf of both Commissioner Brock and myself. You know, the issue isn't coming up with ways to, to make Johnson City better. It's just being patient enough to let the millions of dollars become available to do those things.
No, I, I get it. I understand all that and I understand it's a. It's a broad process, but that broad process you took, you guys had to take that all on yourself. And, and unbox it, like you said.
Well, I don't think we did though. I think Parks, Parks and Rec's advisory board was involved in that. Staff was involved in that. The convention and visitors bureau people were involved in that. There were a lot of stakeholders involved in, in the. Planning and exploration there.
I, I completely understand that and agree with that. I guess what I'm saying is. I, I, we can ride around this all day. Obviously, that was an example from a planning standpoint. Cause I, you know, I started the process when I was on the parks. So I, I kind of walked through that whole process. And it took, you know, six, seven years to get it done. I'm just saying from a land use process. You know. I know why we put it there, but when you look at connectivity, I'm glad we did it, but you know, that wasn't the first piece of property they looked at. So.
And I think this brings up kind of what's in those next two slides, slides twelve and thirteen. What, which are, what are some of the forces we're going to have to manage or overcome? If we elect to move in this direction. And so just as a quick review, and I don't want to read all of these word for word from you all, but comments included, you know. We need to have no political or management influences in our decision process. We're going to have to change mindsets, partnerships with city departments, set clear goals and objectives, proper governance. Additional time and education commitment by individual planning commission members, cultural changes by the planning commission staff. Limitations on what is the authority and what are our powers under state law? Lack of really effective ways to implement the strategies. Develop strategy for change, socialize with staff and city commission before engaging. Avoid stepping on the feet of other boards and committees, and that includes perception as much as actual stepping on feet. Because perception becomes reality. And I want to be very cognizant of that, that we don't try to overstep our bounds and put ourselves in a position where, you know, we. Either want the city commission to feel like we're trying to take over roles that we shouldn't. Or take roles from other committees and commissions in the city. Turf protection from city departments and other governing bodies. Lack of experienced staff, and right now we are having a very large turnover of staff within the department. Need to be aware of all the departments, capital improvement project plans, work with staff and city commission. And then the current culture in the planning commission is a lack of support in the planning department, especially with recent vacancies. Lack of buy-in from city council, lack of enthusiasm from the planning commissioners, lack of imagination. So those are just some of the comments that, you know, we all recorded in response to the question. Asking about what do you think are going to be some of the forces to manage? What types of things are we going to have to overcome? And we, we have about another eight to ten minutes set up for this part of the discussion. And I'd just like to open it up for elaboration from others on some of those comments. And how do we both overcome those, you know, why were those comments made as well as what can we do to address? You know, those, um, potential, um, problems or hurdles. Clay, I'm going to pick on you. You've been too quiet tonight.
Well, thanks.
Sorry, I just had to do that.
That's okay. I, I was gonna just piggyback on, I think maybe to connect. On the, the, the most recent conversation we just had before moving into the, um, some of the potential hurdles was. I, I think. There, there were multiple bodies consulted. Let's, let's take this athletic fields. Conversation that we just had. I think multiple people were consulted. I don't know that the comprehensive plan was consulted. Maybe it was. I, I didn't hear that in the discussion, and I think if, if I could summarize. Kind of some of the thoughts I've had after. what, kind of some of the thoughts I've had after going through the bridge plan is the, the regional planning commission has been tasked with forming that bridge plan and then also taking the lead on the comprehensive plan. I, I think the theme that became pretty clear to me was there's a lot of work put into those plans. And then there wasn't necessarily a culture of consulting the plan when we were looking for, you know, where, where the athletic fields might go. That doesn't mean that we would have to stay absolutely true to what a plan that could be five or six years old at that time would say, but I, I don't, and, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong here and I'm, I'm happy for you to do it. But the theme was that if, if the plan was, you know, was something that we had all stacked hands on at the time, whether it's a bridge plan or a comprehensive, a 20 year comprehensive plan. Are we consulting that as we're making some of these key decisions going forward? And if we're not, do we want to? And if we want to, what role does the planning commission play in that? To help, not to, to do anything other than to help us stay on task. And so I've been quiet, but I've just kind of been listening. And I think if I could summarize what I, I felt like the dialogue was in that previous, you know, discussion on the, the athletic fields, I think it would, it would be to summarize it as that. There were a lot of people consulted. Was the plan consulted?
Yes, yes. Okay. In, in fact, in, in, you know, the, the Parks and Recs folks would have their plan. They would have the comprehensive plan. I know when I was on the planning commission. I can't think of a time an item came before us on the agenda that the staff's comment did not include an up or down recommendation and cite as its authority, the long range and comprehensive plans of the city, that this would be an appropriate use given th- this planning document. That, that was a part of every recommendation we ever got. And I think Commissioner Brock, would you have that same recollection we served? And I think Bob and I were on there and U B. So that's certainly part of it. You know, the, the, I, I heard in one of the comments that Dr. Wild read something to the effect, you know, take the politics out of the decision-making. And that's always a, that's a nice goal. The, the reality of it is it will always be a part of the, you know, be, because it's either not in my backyard or I absolutely only can have this in my backyard, depending on what it is. And so, you know, that, that's always going to be part of it. The, the other complicating factor is that the, i- in, in the case of using the athletic fields, we were also trying to balance with this notion of, of there being a, a swell of support for creating a larger facility rather than having three or four diamonds over here and two or three rectangles over there and, and not being able to do like big tournaments. So we were also trying to figure out how to achieve that outcome on the budget that we would have.
I, I think the, the athletic fields was a, a great example that Jamie tried to bring up as a potential time when perhaps there may have been benefit if there had been greater partnerships. But I don't, I don't want us to get hung up just on that. I think we've kind of beat that horse to death here. And I, I do appreciate everybody's input on that. But what other potential pitfalls do you all see as we move forward and how do we overcome those? I think that is the greater question here that I'm trying to get to.
I think one of the obvious ones is the, and I'm still, to be honest, trying to get my head around exactly where we're headed, but I, I think one of the big, biggies is going to be the, the additional time commitment that's going to be required by a lot of our, our members.
Yeah.
We're all volunteers and we all have other, other lives to live. And I'm still not clear about what result we're going to produce. What positive result are we going to produce?
Okay. I appreciate that.
I think one of the things that kind of comes to light for me is what are the gaps related to planning and looking at the future of land use, you know, in Johnson City? A- a- as opposed to stepping in where other organizations already have that, that is a part of their mandate, their, their mission. So how do we get? And, and Joe's right, i- it would always be, this is part of our land, land use plan. And that would make a lot of sense to us if we were trying to decide if something should go somewhere. And if it wasn't a part of the land use, it was something totally outside the, the, the lines there. We could certainly use that as well to, to try to direct that to, to another location in the city. So, you know, we're, we're 43 square miles, I guess. Is that what we are, Joe? Or Pete? Pete can't speak. So we're, we're inside of this container, so to speak. And so how do we make the best, most positive use, looking at the future of what it, you know, is an advantage to try to attract and bring here to the city? And so that goes hand in hand with our strategic plan. And so how do, how do you kind of overlay the, the land use with our strategic plan? So I see that's a space more that planning commission would want to get involved in as opposed to, you know, site selection for different, different things. And, and Bob's right, this is going to take a lot of, lot of time, but I think if, if we could really identify where the gaps are that would fill a real need for the city and, and maybe a work session really should be with the city commission and the administration of Mr. Peterson and, and Preston at that one, that we could all kind of put our heads together and say, you know, here are three things that we really see could, would be a real advantage if we could, if members of the planning commissions could start focusing in these areas. And remember Stacy, when we rolled out our strategic plan and y'all said, well, we weren't even involved in it. And I had to apologize and say, you know what? We didn't think of it. We, we looked at our other strategic partners in the, in the city, the chamber, the C V B, the J C D A. And it's because as we, as we discussed, you know, the planning commission really focused on this transactional role a lot. And so we didn't think about the strategic part of it. But we've, you know, we've changed there. And so that role I think is, is getting those, getting that really figured out of what the best and highest use of the planning commission could be for the city.
And Jenny, if you don't mind me asking, can you or Mayor Wise kind of spit balls of ideas for us right now of, of ways that you guys think we could, you could leverage this body and, and moving forward on, on your strategic plan?
I would start by saying the strategic plan that the commission put out is intended to be 30,000 feet and very broad brush in nature. So that all the various components of the, and I'm going to use the city not to mean the municipal government, but I'm going to mean it more in the broader community sense of the city so that the city can look to that document. And if you're Bright Ridge, you can see a way you play a part in it. If you're Ballard or E T S U or, or an independent small business, you can see how those pieces are coming together. That would be my, my first thought. The example that I would look to from a land use perspective, I, I know in my time on the planning commission, we were looking at, at elements of the residential zoning code because we have a lot of R two A, R two B, R two C. And a lot of those are created because when we started applying zoning, we had sections of town that were already non-conforming. The setbacks weren't right or the lot sizes weren't right. And so we, we were looking at, at that. Another example would be the West Walnut Street corridor where we had, you know, this essentially industrial zoning applied down through there. Well, clearly that isn't its highest and best use today. It made sense when there were 12 railroad tracks running where State of Franklin is, but it doesn't now. You know, there may even be elements within our zoning code and, and an example that came out of the planning commission relatively recently was the childcare facilities piece where our zoning code was layering on a level of bureaucracy and complexity about how childcare centers could operate that was actually being kind of counterproductive if you were the state trying to better support and regulate and license those facilities. And so I realize I'm probably not answering it prospectively, but I'm kind of giving some examples where I think planning commissions absolutely have a, a place to come in and say, you know, we need to look at how this and that are being done. I, I'll give you an example that might be prospective in go, I was at the National League of Cities Conference a number of years ago now. And they were talking about downtown spaces where you might want to establish sort of a maker space. Well, you know, and whatever that might be, you're a potter, you're a leatherworks or some other kind of good. Many downtown zones wouldn't have supported that because it got into manufacturing. Well, yeah, you don't, you don't want to, you know, a Nike plant in the middle of downtown necessarily, but you might be okay with somebody who's got retail showroom on the front and workshop and manufacturing in the back. And, and that's how we begin to adapt. And that's where I think the strategic plan says a bunch of things about what we're trying to aim at, big picture. But isn't so specific that when those individual questions come up, they've already been painted into a corner some way or another.
Yeah. And Mayor Wise, do you think like, cause I know the, both the strategic plan and especially the bridge plan kind of mentioned it like the master, putting up some kind of master greenway proposal or plan? Is that something you'd feel that the planning commission could help? You could leverage the resources there and help, help you guys as you put that together?
Commissioner Brock, do you want to?
Say, say that again, Ben.
Sorry, my, my little girl's yelling in the background.
We understand.
Mine would be a dog, but go.
I know the bridge plan, the strategic plan makes mention of it, but the bridge plan kind of references a, a master greenway plan for the city. Is that something that you would feel that the planning commission could help? You know, push forward on and help me, is that what you guys?
I'm, I'm going to answer that in a little bit broader framework. You know, we're, we're sitting here at 2021. And what's Johnson City going to look like in 25 years, 50 years? You know, what is Johnson City of the future? I don't know, but these are the kind of things that I think we, we need to start having people thinking about. I mean, there, there's whole initiatives across the country about smart cities, you know, so how do you make your city technology savvy that is going to be able to meet the needs of, of the future? One, one of the, one, one of our domains in the strategic plan is future-ready infrastructure. That's just one piece of it. But what does a city of the future need to attract people, to attract businesses, to be sustainable, to be resilient? All those kinds of things that really takes some thought and planning. And it's, it's not like we're going to go out and do this tomorrow, but it starts setting a, a, a vision for the, for the future as the city, you know, develops for the future. I think that that's an area that I don't know how you bite that off and chew it up and come up with something that is exciting. But that to me is, is something that we don't have. I mean, our, our strategic plan is looking at the future, but it doesn't say, gee, what's our city going to look like for, from a transportation standpoint, from a technology standpoint, from a number of things that would need to be looked at. And as Joe said, the National League of Cities, you know, has a lot of information in reference to this kind of work. And, 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 you know, there, there's a whole slew of stuff on smart cities. So how do we become a smart city? How do we become the city of the future from a planning standpoint?
And if I could add to that, I mean, I think there's probably a distinction to be made between the planning component and the implementation component. So on the greenway kind of piece, you know, assuming you, you, you can imagine things like the Tweedsey Trail becoming part of that. There have been other projects where the city's been involved in water and sewer, new water and sewer infrastructure. And so sometimes the opportunity to implement isn't so much a product of planning as it is seeing and seizing an opportunity. And then, and then that's where you get kind of caught in the political realities of it. That if, if you're doing a water and sewer project and you're, you're getting utility easements and so forth, it's one thing to get a property owner to give you a utility easement. It's another thing for a property owner to let you run a public trail through their yard. And, and so, and if you don't think that generates some political interest, it certainly does. And so those are where those opportunities are though, that, and, and so you look even at things like Founder's Park and King Commons. Those are, those are stormwater management elements disguised as public parks. They're not public parks. They're stormwater management that, you know, and so we've, I think as a city done a reasonably good job in some areas that of getting the greatest bang for our buck. But it also means that you're in scenarios where you're kind of having to adapt and pivot because the specific opportunity may not look precisely like you envisioned, but it's pretty darn close. So that would be all I would add.
Can I add something?
Sure. From you yet?
I'm sitting on my hands is what's happening. Um, so what is, what I'm hearing from you guys is that you really have this opportunity to utilize what you already have in a way that highlights, yeah, we're, we're here and we're doing the work and we know, we, we see these things. So you have this bridge plan and in each individual, what you consider a transactional thing, you can highlight the bridge plan, the strategic plan, plans that other departments have put together and synthesize that and to put it into where we're making an individual decision on this one piece of property. And this is how it interlays with all of the other things that we're doing so that you can start to break off those little chunks of dreams that Commissioner Brock has. You, you, you have this big plan at this big dream and you start to take it through the bridge plan and saying, you know, we have a policy for this. We have a policy that says we support this, or we have a policy that says that this doesn't match what the city really wants. And so to, I think to taking some of those individual decisions and bringing the bridge, bridge plan into your actions or the strategic plan into your actions really says a lot of what you guys are doing. And I think that's kind of how to take some of this stuff and move it forward.
I would just echo that. I, I think even some of the stuff you've sent to the commission since the first of the year. Couple of the M X one rezonings that, that have come to us are, are examples of moving the ball forward, if you will. They're not particularly exciting in the moment, but when you look at how they could impact the, the two neighborhoods where those rezonings are being considered, those are, those are potentially meaningful changes that will manifest themselves in positive change, but it may be five years from now before you really see it.
And what I've found from my own work and in different jurisdictions is that as you start quoting from your own plans, so will your public, which means they're reading them. And that's a pretty powerful thing to get, you know, a citizen to read their planning documents.
I think it's also a good way that businesses become attracted to your community. It's like, all right, we look at our plan, we work our plan, we abide by our plan, but we can also look at it to see if there's other areas that we could fit a business into it. So I think from a acquiring new business, I think, I think businesses like that.
And I think the other thing that's happened, not to make excuses for the plan having gotten a little stale, but, but there was some turnover in the department. The other thing that happened, I don't remember now about, it was probably six or seven years ago, Commissioner Brock refreshed my memory when the rules of the game around annexation became less offensive and more defensive and it fundamentally changed what we could even imagine doing. And so part of it is a, a process of having to relearn. When I first came to the, the planning commission, And so part of it is a, a process of having to relearn. When I first came to the, the planning commission, there were people who served alongside me who were a part of developing the plan that you're talking about creating a bridge to. And some of those people, you know, would, would help me feel like Timber described herself feeling, you know, by remembering, you know, back in 92 when we did this thing. But, but you know, so it, it, I, I think it's just a matter of making it a priority and, and quoting it.
I think.
So see, I had another specific example I wanted to throw on the table, sort of to illustrate where I think the planning commission could potentially have an impact. It was a question raised to me by another city commissioner exactly specifically. And it was, wonder if Johnson City should have an arts or cultural district?
Chris, I'm gonna ask you to, I, I know exactly where you're going with this.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask you.
You skipped a slide.
No, I'm gonna ask you to hold off on it. Because we are, we, we are past our breakpoint and I, I do want to give everybody at least five minutes to take any, you know, body breaks they may need. And you're, that is gonna lead perfectly into the discussion about identifying some specific change activities, I think. And so I think that's gonna be a great segue into it. The next two slides after the break really deal with the legal responsibilities of the planning commission. And those are quotes taken directly from the city attorney, Sunny Sandoz. So we're not gonna go over them in this meeting. That's where I'm gonna regain the 10 minutes that we've gone over here. So I have 6:15 right now. I vote we uh, terminate for about five minutes and let's all come back together at 6:20 and jump right into Chris's discussion and into the discussion of what types of specific change activities could we see moving forward?
And Dr. Wild, before we recess, I have to jump off because I have to retrieve a kid. So uh, my absence when you come back is not a, a vote. It's just a prior commitment. And, and I think there probably is a place that we need to circle back and get the commission and some of the key department heads together to talk through how that current document is shaping things so that you can see as we would create the bridge plan that it too would have that effect.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, Joe. We appreciate it. I'll circle back with you tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Keep up our conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody, five minutes. Come back soon, please.
Has quit doing that.
And that makes me happy to hear that, that we're not reinventing a wheel. And that.
I don't think we are reinventing the wheel.
I, I'd like to just, and, and again, I, I think what Chris just said, you know, this is not a light switch. We're not gonna go in a completely different direction. Making some very small concerted changes could lead us back to maybe functioning more as the planning commission has in the past and and I also appreciate what Bob said, you know, this, this is gonna take a lot of bandwidth and a lot of time from different commissioners. And I think that's gonna come into play in our next discussion. Bob, because one of the things I want to talk about is the different subcommittees. He left us.
I'm not leaving you. I just had to let the dog in.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I would say one of the things, you know, I really appreciated your comment about the amount of time and bandwidth this is gonna take. You know, to make these types of changes from what our volunteer members of this commission. And I think that's gonna come into play when we talk about the different subcommittees because I have some ideas about how we could change our existing subcommittees. And that would allow for people who have more time and bandwidth to function on some and those who don't have the extra time or perhaps aren't really as keen about it functioning on others. So. All right. It looks like we're almost all back. And so I'm going to keep us moving right along here. So thanks again for everybody really participating in what has been a very fruitful discussion so far. Like I said, slides 15 and 16 dealt with the legal responsibilities of the planning commission and I'll just let y'all read those. You don't want to hear me read it. So we're gonna jump right into what I have as slide 17. And that is identification of some specific change activities. And one of the ones that I was just kind of talking before we all came back together with Bob about was looking at our three existing standing subcommittees and kind of assessing and evaluating, are those the best subcommittees that we have? How are they really functioning? Do we want to change those up and things like that? So currently we have a land use committee, a legislative committee and a long range committee. The long range committee has been extremely active in the past year because they functioned primarily as the bridge plan committee. I sit on all three of those committees, so I try to attend all of the meetings. The legislative committee has met a few times in terms of changing things like when we address the childcare. Excuse me. Some of the things like that, the MX one, those kinds of things came before legislative. Um, and I don't know if land use has met recently. Not too long. It's been a long time. Excuse me. So one of my suggestions is that instead of having one committee that's meeting all the time and one that's hardly ever meeting, that we kind of reevaluate and reassess. And so my idea for three committees might be that we do keep a long range planning committee or a strategic, and maybe perhaps even rename it as a strategic subcommittee. A second one might be that we create one, a committee that deals with partnerships or relationship management. And so that could be kind of the committee that focuses more as a liaison with touching base with, you know, economic development, Johnson City Downtown Authority, uh, Parks and Rec, things like that. Building those types of relationships and even as far as being the committee that may be in charge of taking information back to the city commission. Not overstepping Jenny's role, because I know she does that very well. But, you know, helping with that too. So that could potentially be a second committee. And then perhaps taking the current function of both the land use and legislative committees, since they are not as active currently and rolling them together. So those who want to keep that more strategic or transactional focus could certainly choose to serve on that and they would be able to keep, you know, those things more in mind. Those that have the big bold ideas and want to see us go off and never, never land, they can jump on the long range. And then we have this third one that is kind of more focused on building relationships and partnerships. So I want to open that up for discussion and kind of get y'alls input on that idea or other suggestions, pros, cons, do y'all like that idea? Do you have better ideas or whatnot?
I guess I would raise one question of order and this might be a question for Nicole and she's muted and she's not got her video on. There she is. By definition, committees cannot represent a quorum. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And a quorum is defined as how many of us, 10?
Six.
So, so we can have a committee up to five?
Um, Preston, I believe that's correct. Yes. Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to get that definition cleared up.
Nope. That's, that's how it is.
So the whole, the whole commission cannot also function as a committee?
No, sir. And you cannot um, discuss any items that would require you to vote. Like you couldn't vote at your committee meeting.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a quorum. There's.
Yeah, correct.
You could say you like the idea, but it's not a vote.
Right. It's not official. Right.
Okay, thank you.
The, the, the committee itself can vote.
Right.
With. It's not binding on anything. Is that right?
Right. It, it, the committee itself could, but for example, if you, if you had a five member committee, you could have a three, two vote, a split vote. And uh, but having odd numbers is preferred. Uh, so committees.
Yeah, usually what you're doing is you're voting to bring it to the full planning commission.
Right, right.
With, with a recommendation, but um, i- is there a very clear purpose of each one of these? I mean, what, what's the mandate of each one of the committees? I'm gonna defer and let either Preston and Nicole. Uh, those committees have existed as long as I have been on the planning commission. I don't know when they were created, if they have ever changed or how they came about.
They were created when Hassan was development coordinator. And so that, when he was the liaison for the planning commission, that was a part of his um, part of his functions. So that's usually left up to Preston and he, he would handle that at this point.
Right. You, you can actually blame me for that. Because um, I actually brought the committee structure to Hassan. The uh, we used the committee structure very successfully in my previous location. And uh, as, as do many other communities. So, you know, as we're talking about comparing ourselves to other communities, uh, it is a very normal thing to use the committee structure. It, that was a replacement for that five o'clock early meeting. There was an attempt to try to converse and, and hammer out some details in advance of the regular meeting and it was, it was creating some, some problems. Uh, and so so Hassan and I talked about it and uh, these three, these three committees were identified uh, and then vetted through the previous planning commission chair and then down through the planning commission. And then to answer Commissioner Brock's question, yes, the, the current three committees are well defined. We would need to define the role of the next three. And I will say, just as your department head and as your principal liaison, I think that your recommendations, Dr. Wild, are fantastic. I see no problem with that. You're exactly right in terms of the land use and legislative. If I could, just give a little bit of background on, I think everybody understands about the long range. The, the legislative um, is and, and has been focused primarily on legislative actions. That is your rezonings and text amendments. The uh, the other is the land use uh, was typically reserved for your subdivision activities. You, this board and planning commissions in Tennessee have more authority than planning commissions where I came from. You are the final word on subdivision decisions. And so that's why it was important to have a separate committee for just for subdivision plats uh, and subdivision plating, because some of those 90% of what you see are pretty mundane, but some of those can get pretty nasty. And so that's why it was good to have those two. But because both of those committees tend to work on a more ad hoc basis. I don't see a problem at all with combining them, using the same individuals, because it will be very rare that you have a need for a a plat and a rezoning committee to meet simultaneously. That committee could just handle both of those items back to back. And then in terms of renaming the long range uh, committee to strategic planning or some other, some other more engaging name, I think that's a wonderful idea. And then the other is um, the uh, the engagement or relationship. I'm not sure exactly what, what name you used, but that committee that would act as the arm essentially, the reaching out arm of the planning commission to touch and meet and discuss with the JCDI and these other entities to, to, to hear about what they're doing and, and how that work might impact you all. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Well, thank you. And, and I would say, Preston, I, I like the idea of the subcommittees that you created. I think that has been very successful. I like venting things, you know, before the meetings in a committee and then those committee members are able to speak more fully about it at our meeting. So I think that was an excellent suggestion. So I think that was an excellent suggestion that you brought on board, and I'd like to keep it. I just want to reevaluate, are our current committees the most appropriate? Or should we tinker with them a little bit? And so I'd like to hear from some other people. Tembra, I'm going to call on you, because this is an easy one. I haven't heard much from you tonight, but I, you being the newbie. Have you understood the function of the current committees? Do you think that they're appropriate? What would be your thoughts on us maybe tweaking it a little bit?
Well, I mean, I'm on the Legislative Committee, and we've met, you know, I don't know, three or four times, I think, just in my short little tenure. I, I guess I'm a little bit, I guess with the Relationship Management Committee, I would, I would be a little, I'm just, I don't understand necessarily the function that that one would have. I guess because, I mean, I'm assuming, and Preston kind of answered some of my, some of my questions that I was having in the sense that, are you talking about like they would go to, like, for instance, I sat on the JCDI board until just, just, I had to roll off of it. So I got on to this one. They would actually go and, and sit at a board meeting? Or how, how do you, how do you anticipate that happening to, to have that arm out and to get to, you know, to know them? Because I guess that's the, I, I get the strategic planning, I get the, the land use and the legislative. I'm just trying to understand how that Relationship Management Committee would actually work out.
Dr. Wild, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, that's a great question. I was gonna ask if Chris may want to help elaborate on that, because that's something he and I have kind of talked about off the record before.
I think there's some soft things that a Relationship Management Committee could start to do, and that would be to look for organizations that we would like to develop a, a dialogue or a connection to, where we think there would be more reasons for tran, traction between our organizations than, than perhaps others. One person could perhaps pay attention to the agendas for meetings going on and look, just be aware of topics that may be coming up that would be of interest between the two groups. One person might, might be a guest or just be an observer at their meetings to ask questions or to listen. If a question came up, there would be a designated person that would, would reach out and ask the question on behalf of the commission, instead of it just being, does somebody know somebody? I'm not thinking that it would be something like an official liaison person that would always be an ad hoc member of that board. I'm, I'm not thinking that it would be anything nearly that formal.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was thinking, more somebody just to start building relationships, you know, reach out to the different commissions, you know, introduce ourselves.
There's even a way to do this through the staff too, since, since you all were seeking additional staff engagement, especially as it relates to this, to this initiative. You know, we are here for the citizens of Johnson City. And we are here to, to facilitate all of your work. And so if, if, if your work now is, is interested in just being more informed about these other activities, then there's absolutely nothing wrong with staff attending these other, obviously, you know, closed sessions and things like that would be, would be different. But for staff to attend the JCDI or for staff, which staff has been doing for years, or staff to attend a, a Parks Board meeting, et cetera, et cetera. And then call that committee together and then report back information that they've received or that they heard and share that information with the committee. It would be really no different than Chairwoman Wild asking us to have a, you know, kind of updates and information from around the city on your normal, regular agenda. But that would be something that would take up so much time on your normal agenda that that would work beautifully for a, for a committee where staff could say, we went to the Parks Board, this is what they were talking about. Or we attended the JCDI meeting on Friday, and this is what they were talking about. We want to let you all know that and feel free to share that with the rest of the commission, or we can bring it and put it on a regular agenda. So there are ways that, that staff can, can help you do this, because it goes back to the comment that, that Commissioner Cooper brought up. You know, your all's time is, it, it's, it's limited. And so we need to do everything we can to, to, to help you try to meet this objective.
Thank you, Preston. I think that's an excellent idea, and I appreciate your offering to do that, because that would certainly help define that, that committee if we choose to go in that route a little better and their function and how they could achieve that function. Other, do, do you all have other ideas on, I mean, does everybody like the current three committees? Do you all think it's a good idea that we try to kind of tweak them a little? I, I mean, I don't want it to be a Stacy vote.
I'll make an observation, and, and I think it's something that's become clear to me just in tonight's conversation. The land use committee, I always had the impression that land use was a much bigger space than subdivision rigs. And so land use, to me, started to roll over into land use applications, mapping, land use strategy, long-term plans for land use, which I think that's not really what you meant when you called it land use.
Well, at the time, at the time when Hassan and I were talking, it, it, it also encompassed, encompassed streets and transportation. And it, 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 as it kind of grew, but not including legislative and not including long-range plan, it, it, it grew into this bubble, and then there wa, there really wasn't a name for it. And so what it was, what, what was landed on was land use. And that was probably just poor terminology. But the way that, and I was, I was excited with, with how Hassan took it and ran with it. I mean, I think he did a good job of, of applying that committee in, in the right places at the right time. Legislative knew exactly what they were doing. Those were rezonings and text amendments. Long-range got their head deep into the bridge plan. That was great. So this was all the other work, everything from engineering to transportation to roads to
Infrastructure, infrastructure.
Infrastructure. Really, that's going to be all Will's, Will's bag and Engineering's bag.
So we could just call it Will's Committee.
That's right. The right committee.
The right committee. I like that, as opposed to the wrong committee. I haven't heard from you. I'm sorry, Bob. I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I saw that Uwe finally took his mute off, so I thought maybe he wants to add something.
Had a quick comment. I, I wonder in terms of long-range committee, how does Preston feel about creating a leadership role for the Planning Commission in terms of visionary concepts for the city? Not that he, he should be overriding the City Commission, but in terms of creating some matrix or continuity in our overall long-range plan. That's the question I have, is how do we create a symbiosis of everything together that will, that we can then discuss? But I, I kind of see the Planning Director being a leader in some of these decision processes. We all seem to be having different opinions about what should happen. But I wonder who, who the real force is behind all this? And that, that's a question I have for Preston. He's worked in other cities. How do we, how do we synthesize what we need to do? I guess, Preston, can you help on that?
Sure. I'll be happy to. I think that the first, the first takeaway, the first action item is to do exactly what the mayor brought up. And that was to bring, to find a way to bring together the elected body with the Planning Commission, with the city manager and myself in attendance to help have that conversation on, on, on how we can, we can come together and, and synthesize these, these initiatives and, and these ideas. Ultimately though, as you know, and you alluded to, I work at the pleasure of the city manager. The city manager works at the pleasure of the City Commission. So I'm going to respond to the city manager and, and his specific directions. But I think the way to, to try to gain a better understanding on, on, on our next steps, especially as it relates to this synthesis with City Commission, is, is to have that, that come together that the mayor mentioned.
Okay, got you. Sounds good. I'd just like to see more of your role in terms of the process and, and, and the leadership, rather than an advisory role or a staff role. I think you could, you could be more of a focus for all of us. Because with ten of us, we're gonna have so many different opinions. It'd be good to have somebody that kind of says, okay, here's where we're going, particularly in terms of long-range concepts. So that's, that's all I've got comment on right now.
Uwe, for, for your information, I think Preston and his folks have, have served that role very well up till now. They brought us a number of, well, MX zoning that we were, we've recently dealt with, I think is a good example of that. So they, they, they are certainly willing and able and, and aggressive in that regard.
Good.
Stacy, given this new, new environment that we think we're creating, what, how would this Strategic Committee operate? What would be their major, major charge?
I, I would see them as, I think, one, there has to be a strong linkage between the Bridge Plan and the City Commission's Strategic Plan. And I think there is tremendous overlap already, but I would see this committee perhaps identifying those areas where that linkage is the strongest and helping maybe to focus on those items. I don't know if that would be the appropriate committee to perhaps, you know, maybe even start prioritizing as a Planning Commission, what types of projects would we like to see brought to focus? Because I think Jenny said it very eloquently in that, yeah, we can all have visions, and it's not a shortage of ideas and what we'd like to see happen, but until we have the money to make it happen, it ain't gonna happen. And so I just see that one more as, you know, where do we find that overlap between the plans and maybe advising the City Commission as to what the focus they would like to see occurring? Does, do others have other thoughts about what they would see that commission though? Particularly people who have served maybe on the Bridge Plan Committee? What are y'all's thoughts about, what would a long-range or strategic committee look like to you?
Well, one thing that I think we don't do enough of, and, and it's because I think we've defaulted to assume that that's the purview of the staff, and the staff is, it does not have an unlimited capacity. And that's to do benchmarking, to look for ideas of things we could do or things we may choose not to do, or things that we might do in a certain kind of order. I don't, I think we, there's, there's more potential for us to collect ideas and to make choices than what we've used in the past. And I think in the past, we've, only with, to the extent of my experience, we, we've pretty much waited for the staff to bring ideas to us.
Right.
So, you know, just, this is something I've been thinking a little bit about. So if we took an approach and, and not only looked at it from a long-term perspective, we looked at it as an opportunity perspective. So let's say you, you, you picked out opportunity zones within our footprint. And we partnered with Economic Development and create a transportation plan about, you know, some sort of boundaries for this particular opportunity zone. And created with Bright Ridge, you know, when, you know, what kind of access do they have to high-speed internet, power, all that good stuff? And then say, okay, Economic Development, this is a little section of acreage. What can you do with it? Who can you bring to us, being an opportunity zone? And then maybe look at some TIF monies, opportunities. You know, and that way, it, it bridges that whole aspect of planning, economic development, all into one arena.
And infrastructure?
Yes, absolutely. So you, you, you kind of micromanage the strategic plan to say, okay, this is what we can do. This is kind of the plan we have. All we need to do is plug and play with some businesses. So Economic Development, go out and find us people who would like to come see our city, Four Seasons, low taxes, well-educated populace. What can you do for us?
Yeah, let me just make a comment, I think, on an easy way to get started here. You know, as, as I mentioned in, in my introduction, I've, I've actually been serving on the City Commission for eight years. And this past year is the first year we've ever had a strategic plan. So planning was kind of done through the budget process. You know, what made the capital improvement list, what got funded in the departmental budgets? And each department would bring a set of objectives. And so we would kind of sit back and look at those things and said, you know, those are all good things. So what, what we did this past year was to try to look, you know, at the, at the future. So we only have so much money to invest, but if we could determine through talking with our partners, with, talking with businesses, with doing some surveying that we did outside the area, what the people know about Johnson City, then we kind of came up with these ideas that if we begin to focus in these four broader areas, maybe we could start making some progress in moving forward. So through that process though, the city can't do it all. And so many things are done through our partner organizations. And now that we have the Planning Commission sitting at the table with that, our next, our next level was to take the strategic plan and to let all of the partners plug in and say, here's what we're doing that supports one of the four areas or all four of the four areas. For example, one of our goals in the strategic plan on future-ready infrastructure was to become a, a more environmentally friendly city. And, and so, you know, really looking at renewable sources of energy. Bright Ridge fills that for us. They're planning their second solar farm now, just right here in Washington County. We are seeing an infrastructure of electric charging stations around the city and the county. And we will all be pushing more toward electric vehicles. So that's, that's our work with Bright Ridge to help deliver on that, that part of our strategic plan. So I think an easy way to get started is really looking at that strategic plan and crossing it with the Bridge Plan to say, okay, here are three areas where the Planning Commission really can play. And to help move, you know, the, the bigger plan forward. I mean, that's just a good starting point. And we need that. That's exactly what we need. We've got, you know, we have JCDI taking these things, we have net reps taking these things. And together, then we can really move this thing forward and, and get us to a place that we're being driven by thoughtful planning. And then we can make the investments. So Stacy, you remember the, the comeback now to our partners on the strategic plan is their request for funding to deliver on those areas that support the strategic plan. And so we'll be getting with them all in the next probably thirty to forty-five days, probably thirty days, to see what their plans are going to be. And so I think there's a, there is a role there for the Planning Commission to step in and take some of these things and, 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 you know, look at how we move them forward.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I agree. I think it's a great idea.
You know, it just occurred to me before the break, I, I cut Chris off. He was going to give us an example that I thought would still kind of come into play with this discussion and its relevance. And it had to do with the overlay district inquiry that you made, Chris. I wanted to give you an opportunity to go back to that.
Well, I was posed with a question is, wonder if Johnson City should create an arts or cultural district? And I'm like, I don't know the answer to that question. It sounds like an interesting idea. And I, I recognize a lot of cities have gone down that road.
And I I recognize a lot of cities have gone down that road. It didn't strike me as a topic that's called out in our strategic plan or in our bridge plan. But then I thought, well, you know, let's let's take one step back. So I called Kelly Duggan and I said, how do cities approach these discussions? And she introduced me to some details around overlays and gave me some examples. And I thought that was an interesting approach to how that could be done. And it doesn't really cost a lot of money. And I thought to myself, well, I think this is a question that could go on the table for the strategic or long term planning committee. And and to say, what would it what would it involve? What would be the the pros and the cons of adopting a a plan to promote an archer arts or cultural district? And I could immediately think of lots of different questions that could be answered, asked about the question and many different alternatives that should be considered. So I thought that was an interesting example of something that was a little bit beyond the thinking that I think we've had from a transactional point of view.
I think that's a great example.
Chris, it 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 really, really is. And as I kind of go back to my comments earlier about, oh, what do what do we want the city to be? You know, twenty years, twenty five years? And what are the gaps? What are we missing to become a more family friendly city, to become a more child friendly city? These are all things that are in our strategic plan. So it's how do you get there? And under quality of place in the strategic plan, there's all sorts of goals that would doing something like what you're talking about would support one of those goals. There certainly has been discussion about, you know, we've got the old Ash Street Courthouse. It now is on the National Register, the historic recognition that it has there. Had COVID not come along, we would have already been working on that building because the governor gave us five million dollars to plow into that. And what we had talked about with him was that it could be redone, saved and become in in that end of of the West Wall Street corridor, the east end could become kind of an entrepreneurial zone, an ecosystem for entrepreneurs to start small business. And and perhaps the Ash Street Courthouse can play into that. But other ideas for Ash Street Courthouse, now that it's on the National Register and the Heritage Alliance, would like to see it as a museum. So do you create a museum district on the east end of that corridor? So how you get there, I I think is the real challenge. The value to the city in in terms of accomplishing one of these parts of our strategic plan is is certainly something that we know that cities who attend to that, it it it's very popular, you know, among the residents. Five years ago, we didn't have any art downtown. Now look at, look at the value that has created for the city and what is creating for downtown. It's just a beautiful place and more will be added. But it took somebody with some vision to do that and to say, okay, here's something specifically. And then for us, then it's for us to figure out how that gets funded and over what period of time. But those are great ideas, I think, you know, what are we missing? You know, what are the gaps to being a city that is just number one choice for people to come here?
All right. Well, so far, what I'm hearing, if we're we're still on our topic of identifying specific change activities, one was the idea that we potentially consider restructuring our subcommittees and perhaps combining land use and legislative into the right committee and adding a new committee that would focus more on developing partnerships and relationship management with city commission, with other city entities and things like that. And then keeping our existing long range committee and potentially renaming it to have a more strategic focus to its name. That leads us into the creating partnership relationships. I think we've talked about the linkage between the bridge plan and the city commission strategy. We've talked about benchmarking. And Preston has assured us that he is willing and able to serve as subject expert and make staff available to help us in any way possible. And I think they already do do a phenomenal job of that. So are there other specific activities that anybody would like to see us move in the direction? My next slide kind of outlined, you know, my vision for maybe even refocusing our meetings into a more development, a portion, and then a strategic planning portion. I don't know if we'd be ready to go there quite yet. I think the strategic planning portion could be handled more appropriately in that last section of our meeting where it's reports and discussion and ideas at this time until we kind of grow in that direction somewhat. But what are the are there other ideas from each of you that you'd like to see as we talk about this potential, you know, specific activities that we could take hold of?
Well, I think that the strategic planning could become more structured committee reports or more regular committee reports.
Right.
Stacy, I, you know, when I read through the 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 bridge plan, line to line, page for page, took me several weeks. I apologize. You know, there are a couple of deliverables in there that I saw that would just seem to be like low hanging fruit, that would be a really easy way to start this process. And it'll be an easy way to kind of give us like a little bit of a win to encourage our momentum going forward. Some of them were, I think, talked about zoning changes to encourage infill development, to really start increasing the different areas. And going back, I think, to an article that Chris sent out earlier about making neighborhoods more inclusive instead of exclusive. There's another policy idea in there that talks about reducing parking minimums to to facilitate more development. Another one was a vacant buildings registry. And a lot of these things, you know, I think we've been working on quite a bit with developmental services. But I think those are really easily tangible things that we can identify early on in this process and have some early wins on this.
I think that's a great idea. Would you see those coming from one of the specific subcommittees we've talked about? Or do you think those
Yeah.
multiple subcommittees?
I think it'd be multiple subcommittees. You know, one of the other ones I saw was talked about promoting intergovernmental relationships between Washington County and Sullivan County and their kind of planning areas. And I've never met any of those commissioners over there, but, you know, we're regional planning. There's a huge part of this bridge plan that talked about, you know, we need to still annex some areas. And I think helping facilitating those conversations started would be a great idea. So that would could definitely come out of the relationships subcommittee. But I just think there's a lot of good ideas. If you go to this plan, just like, man, a lot of this work's already been done and just come up with the ideas. They're there. Let's just, I mean, I'll volunteer. Let's pick it up and let's run with it. Let's go.
Okay. Y'all heard that Benjamin's in charge.
I volunteer for the work. I'll work hard. I I don't want to be in charge.
Okay, so are are we in agreement about the three proposed new subcommittees? Does anybody want to add to that one or disagree with that one, argue against it? Would there be interest amongst us? I think it equally important to determine if we're in agreement about forming these. But is there going to be interest amongst us in serving on those three? Is everybody here going to say, oh, yeah, well, I'd I'd love to see that happen if I can all be on the long range planning or if we can all be on, you know, Will's committee? Do we? Do you all see potential interest among yourselves of those different subcommittees?
Stacy, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
What if we poll all all the commissioners on their 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 preference order to be on a committee? Because I think it's really not fair for us for you not to sit on one committee. I think that's assumed or expected.
Right.
At least my take. And let's just do a a poll, and we may not be able to do it live tonight during this meeting. But what would be your preference, first preference, second preference, third preference? And just see how the 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 entity of ten of us split up amongst the the three committees.
I think that's a great idea. I'll 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 put out an email tomorrow and send it to each of you and just name the three proposed subcommittees and let each of you respond to me with what your first, second, and third choices will be. And I'll take it upon myself to kind of compile that data and see where we all fall and report that back at our next meeting next Tuesday so that hopefully we could make committee assignments.
Now, the only catch in that plan is, is there any ambiguity of what we mean these three committees to be? I I feel pretty clear about it.
Yeah, I think in that email, we should have the definitions of of at least what we think each committee is gonna be. Their their scope to make it clear. Yeah.
That was that was where I was gonna jump in, if you don't mind. I think too, that tonight, the idea, at least my understanding, part of, you know, our your focus for tonight was was hundred thousand foot level as a, you know, as a as a goal setting session. So it sounds like that if you want to set it as a goal, let's not try to figure out exactly how that looks and what it looks like right now that, you know, that could be something that staff would be happy to meet with Dr. Wild and with Commissioner Cooper to kind of hammer out some of those, you know, we'll be glad to provide. Again, this is where we've we we are the working arm for the board. And so we'll be glad to draft some language and submit it to Dr. Wild and to Commissioner Cooper for their review. And we can chat about that. No need to flush that out when you're in a goal setting session.
Excellent idea. I just added you to my follow up email tomorrow, Preston. Okay.
Stacy, would there be any, I would only add as it pertains to the committees, is there any overlap between the strategic slash long range committee and a potential relationship committee on the the continual follow up of a bridge plan and potential comprehensive plan with our different partners within the city as it applies to the different elements? That's one thing we had talked about is to 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 either have reports made back to the planning commission. And now seems like that may not be the direction we're going, but may to engage our partners on bear turf as we continue to, as we try to keep momentum and and the the plan at top of mind. Is there an overlap there or do you see that activity landing with one of those two committees specifically?
I I I see interaction between the three committees. So I see potentially, you know, strategic committee identifying something. And in their presentation to the full commission, then we toss that off maybe to the partnership committee that they're going to reach out to, okay, who are the appropriate partner organizations that we need to engage in order to move this forward? I see the same kind of thing coming out of, you know, land use and legislative that potentially, you know, things that maybe the partnership committee, you know, from a report from Preston, you know, Preston comes back and says, hey, Parks and Rec is trying to decide this. But, you know, they want to work with this piece of land. And maybe that winds up having to go back to the land use legislative committee because maybe that piece of land is going to need rezoning. And so that's something for them. So I see an interaction between them, and I don't think they have to be mutually exclusive. I think there's gonna be a time when, you know, two or more of the subcommittees could potentially be working towards the same end goal. That's how I envision it.
If if I just understood you, and and I might not have, but if I just understood you, it I do feel like that there's going to be overlapping then because what I understood you to say is that there was a question that came up during the strategic, let's say, during a strategic planning committee. They're gonna come back to the board, you know, and and indicate that. And then the relationship committee would then go and reach out to whoever they need to reach out to. And to me, that just, I'm not sure that that's gonna work because the the relationship committee isn't on that strategic committee and they've not had that discussion. So you're gonna have to spend more time discussing it with them to get them to understand it, to go and ask the questions to the relations or to, you know, to the different bodies. I'm just struggling with that a lot. I mean, I I don't know how that's gonna work.
I think that's a good point. I would counter it by saying two things. One, as chair, I float and I attend all the different committee meetings. So you're typically gonna have somebody that would have been in meeting one that now could relay that information directly to subcommittee meeting two. Two, it could be that, you know, if we're setting up three different committees, there are only going to be three people each. We could have up to five before we hit a quorum. So potentially, we have a chair of each of those subcommittees and the chair could serve as a representative of that subcommittee when it gets passed from subcommittee one to subcommittee two. That that could be two ways to overcome. Now, I don't want to be redundant and I don't want to add more steps than we have to either, you know. I don't want to turn this into what could be done in one step. I'm gonna turn into a five step process. That's not my intention. But I I do think there's enough distinct work as as I see it that we could have three different functioning committees. But I think these are great points of discussion that are coming up is how do we avoid, you know, adding more steps to the process than are necessary? Could one committee take care of it all in some instance? And there's nothing to say that they couldn't. But could another committee facilitate the work of one too, perhaps?
Stacy, I think we need to check something out. I'm I'm on the Bright Ridge Board and we have committees. For example, I'm on the finance audit committee and there are four, four of us who are on that committee, four or five, maybe. We're the only ones who can vote and do anything like that and make recommendations. But almost at every committee meeting we have, we probably have the rest of the board members attend. It's they're public meetings and we we, I mean, these have to be public meetings, so anybody can be there if they want to and they've got time and they're looking for something to do.
You're saying that, I mean, the whole commission could attend a subcommittee meeting. It would just be the subcommittee members that would get to vote on anything.
Yeah. So I don't, I've never heard, I've never heard of this thing about the quorum thing. I'd have to to follow up to make sure that we're not doing it wrong at Bright Ridge, but that's the way.
I'm gonna add that to my list of follow ups tomorrow. I'm gonna reach out to Sunny and I'll ask Preston and Nicole if you all wouldn't mind doing some behind the scenes work too.
I mean, Rattrick, Rattrick is the same public body. I mean, everything is is a public meeting.
Well, if if you don't mind, the difference is that if the, and and again, I don't know how how Bright Ridge is set up. But since the planning commission is statutorily created and then and then by ordinance, you know, all of your your rules and procedures are then established. As a as a as a as a body of the government unit, every meeting you have has to be a an advertised meeting. Every meeting you have is a public meeting. So if a committee was to come together, let's say the long range strategic committee was to come together, you would then have to advertise for the whole board. So you'd have to advertise it as a board meeting if the board was coming together. Now, the only way you could really get around that is is if you advertised as a committee meeting and then board members showed up and just sat around the corners of the room and weren't a part of the conversation. But I don't think that would be a very comfortable thing. I don't think that's very realistic. So the where that's coming from is you would then, if if you had six members of the planning commission, you've got six members in attendance, which is a which is an actual board meeting. So.
Preston, I have a copy of the Tennessee Open Meetings Law from the Tennessee Code annotated. And I'm happy to distribute that to everyone tomorrow morning, if that's okay.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, and let's, we'll get some work to get to some clarification on that because it would be good to know.
So if I could, Dr. Wild, there was an, there was an example given and I want to make sure I didn't mishear or or misunderstand the example that was given. Because part of what you're wanting to do with this relationship committee is is expanding beyond the current bounds of the Planning Commission the way your rules and procedures are set up. And so not only your rules and procedures, but we're going to need to just double-check the ordinances. And because you all touched on earlier about kind of stepping into other folks' wheelhouses in terms of work. And so the example that was given about a park site, there was a park site that Parks and Rec Board was talking about and maybe the Parks and Rec Board was considering Site X or Site Y. And then staff was there and they heard that. And that was a public meeting. And then they went to this committee and shared with Site X or Site Y that was being considered. And then the Relationship Committee made a recommendation to the full board that here are these two properties that are being considered by the Parks and Rec Committee or Parks and Rec Board, and we should consider rezoning one of them. The problem with that is that, is that we could just have jumped way out in front of something that would not be appropriate. And that speaks back to the comments that the mayor was speaking about in terms of the amount of work that's going on behind the scenes in terms of, with the city manager and in terms of property acquisitions, property considerations, financing. There are so many other environmental, public works. There are a number of considerations that would need to be. This committee would not be able to just hear something from the Parks and Rec Board and then take that and act on it.
I agree.
They, so, so that's why I think this is a great idea. I think there's a way, early on, this is how I kind of envisioned this, is that early on, I think this board simply needs to be given a whole bunch of information about what's going on in, you know, in these other areas of the city, receiving information. And let's see how that receiving of the information feels and is processed by the board. But I don't believe it's, it would be appropriate to then act on that information without some direction from the city manager and ultimately from the City Commission.
I think we will continue to take our cues from staff and from you in particular, Preston. And so I don't see any of these subcommittees acting independently of recommendations, you know, through you all. So I do appreciate your bringing that up because that is a good point. We don't want to, you know, get ahead of ourselves and cause more trouble than we're worth. We want to act more as a facilitary body that can enable other, you know, the City Commission and other committees and work together to make it easier on everybody. We certainly don't want to put any roadblocks up. So, but I appreciate your.
And Stacy, I think that's what I'm struggling with is that, you know, I don't, and I'm sorry, my dogs are barking, but I think I'm struggling with the fact that what, what exactly can the Relationship Committee do? You know, I mean, could it be a situation where Preston's staff could accumulate the actions of some of the other boards or some of the other departments and then present that during a meeting instead? I just don't, I just don't want to step on people's toes. And I have a feeling that, you know, I don't know, I'm just struggling with the relationship part of it.
Yeah, let me, let me sleep on that, Tempera. And I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to touch base and circle around with Preston tomorrow and I'll probably reach out to some of you individually and maybe we can get a better idea of what we envision as that Relationship Partnership Committee and get it better defined and things like that.
I mean, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I feel like, you know, I know quite a few people that are chairs of committees and that sort of thing and that I could just pick up the phone, just like Chris did, you know, and go to that person. If I had a question, I'm going to pick up the phone and I'm going to call them and ask them. But to show up at their meeting or to kind of miss in their nest, so to speak, to see what they're up to, I don't know. I just, I've got some concerns about that.
Yeah, I don't envision going to any other meetings of others. At least me, myself, I don't envision that. But I think having, you know, staff present, staff could, yes, do a presentation at the end of our meetings to all of us, but I think in the essence of time, our already exceedingly long meetings are going to become even more exceedingly long if we did that. So I envision this more as staff meeting with this particular Subcommittee to kind of keep them up to date on what's going on with others as it pertains to something that the Planning Commission may be able to help with. But, but I agree with you. We need to iron that out better. And so I appreciate your concerns and I'll try to think on that a little more and ask each of you to do that. And, you know, feel free to reach out to me individually, send me emails or whatever, and let's see if we can't better define these. Okay? All right. Moving on then, I think our next real steps. Joe already addressed forming a bigger partnership between the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And so I'm going to be following up with him tomorrow on that one. That's Slide 19, if anybody's following along. And I think we'll be able to iron that one out a little better. We've already invited city commissioners to attend our retreat. I was very grateful that Joe was able to join us tonight and provide his input. I do want to, you know, see a greater partnership between the City Commission and the Planning Commission. We haven't really gotten a lot into the capital improvement projects and capital improvement budget discussion. I don't think that's something that we're going to be able to tackle this evening. I think that's something that, again, I'll follow up with the mayor and see maybe some of his ideas of partnerships and where we could play a role in that and where that might land. So what I want to go into to kind of wrap us up is our next steps. I think we've talked about different subcommittees and potentially restructuring our subcommittees. And y'all have given me a lot to think about in terms of defining names and real functions for each of these committees. So I'll spend the next few days really working on that and try to send out something to everybody to, you know, measure where you all think you would like to potentially serve. But the last thing is how are we going to measure our success? We've thrown around a lot of ideas and I can see us, you know, recreating our subcommittees and renaming them and making assignments. And we've all agreed that we want to be a little more strategic. And I think Whitney, you know, was brilliant in her speech when she said, you know, every single time we look at something, we can incorporate this bit by bit and in very small increments. But what other measurements of success can you all think of that we could have that is really going to let us know whether or not we're making any movement forward or whether this was, you know, just two hours of everybody's time that we kind of listened to ideas, but we don't really act upon?
Man, I think the proof is going to be in the pudding, right? I think as we move forward, I think the next meeting on Tuesday is going to tell us what impact tonight had. And I think, first of all, we have a Subcommittee meeting. It's going to show us what impact tonight had. And I think we have our first kind of deliverables, whatever they are. I think it's going to show us what kind of impact we had. And I think as we just move forward and we keep this documented, the Strategic Plan and the Bridge Plan, I mean, keep them alive and just keep moving on them and operating on to them, I think that's success. And I think as we start coming up with what our objectives are, I think once we set an objective, then we set a goal and you can measure what your objective is. So I think it's going to come with time. And I think, I think Tuesday will be the first, first test.
Okay. Perhaps as we get the new subcommittees formed, you know, we can start creating more specific goals for the Planning Commission overall, coming out of each of those subcommittees? That may be something.
Something else that, that staff would be happy to do is, we would be happy, all of our case files, all of our work is managed for us in this very nice piece of software that the City Commission purchased for us several years ago. And that software produces very nice reports. So what we could do is on a quarterly basis, provide reports that break down into your subreg and subdivision plat considerations and then also your legislative considerations. And in those reports then provide, as Whitney said, pieces of information and kind of hot links to strategic plan and comp plan slash bridge plan objectives that were noted. So I think that would be great in terms of casework. That's easy. That's just reporting on a quarterly basis. And then, and then outside of that, I would actually recommend, Dr. Wild, that you tap into, since you're wanting to have these retreats on a, I always get this wrong, whether it's biannual or semi-annual, twice a year. Since you're wanting to have these twice a year, that at each one of these, we then, it's the same thing that the city manager asks of all the department heads when we turn in our budgets. We have to submit to him what have we accomplished in our last fiscal year goals and what are our next fiscal year goals? And that's provided for the City Commission in making their budgetary decisions. So I think it would be reasonable for that type of information to be provided to you all on a six-month basis when you have your next retreat, say, these were the items that were highlighted as, as short-term goals and this was accomplished, or this is a mid to long-term goal and this is underway.
That would be wonderful. I really appreciate that.
Only other thing I might add is that we would, those are the, those are how we're going to measure our successes with the, with the more strategic initiatives that we're taking on. I don't want us to lose sight of the daily blocking and tackling of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department, especially as viewed through the lens of serving our fellow citizens in the city. And so if we, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to forget that because ultimately that is our responsibility and the bare minimum of what we need to be doing. And so if we could continue to incorporate reporting on, hey, what's our pull-through rate on applications? How long has it taken? Where are our bottlenecks? You know, and setting some objectives of standards we want to meet to make sure that we're responding to requests from our neighbors. That would be my only addition. I mean, listen, I'm all for pushing for the strategic stuff, but, but ultimately, you know, we are still tasked with the, with the daily.
The only thing I can say to that is wow, because Clay, you just literally pulled the words and thinking straight out of Whitney Hodge's mouth. Whitney submitted to me about two days ago, she said, Preston, in the time that I've been the planning consultant or one of the two planning consultants, I think that we have a real problem with how our filing deadlines are aligned with how staff gets that work done, the timeliness, and then getting it to you in a way that it is complete and that we don't have hanging chads when we come to the Planning Commission. So Whitney went, went ahead, pulled together this whole PowerPoint presentation in how we could and should modify our filing deadlines and said, here, what do you think about this? What do you think about submitting this to the Planning Commission? And I said, holy cow. So you've, you've already got very talented staff who are, who are jumping on that and are taking that, that kind of initiative. Yeah. So it's, and, and, you know, there's a, there's something that we talk about here in the office quite often and that is everything we do is very organic. If, if we, because we, we have to be customer-focused. And if we act like a traditional old government agency and say, you're just going to follow our guidelines that we've had since 1975 and you just need to do it the way we've been always doing it, then we're going to fail. And so we internally are always looking at our process and procedures. How do we modify those? How do we improve those? That's why we always have to be organic. And it's the same thing with the code. The code's not the Ten Commandments. Code needs to always be updated. And so that's where Mr. Ryder, with his expertise on the sign ordinance, comes to me often and says, hey, there's this problem with the sign ordinance. It's creating a bottleneck here. I know exactly how to fix it. And that's what Whitney's done with our process and procedures.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it. Whitney, just go ahead and cut that check to my attention, if you.
I love it. I love it.
It's good stuff.
Yeah. Well, guys, I think this has been a very fruitful conversation. I've really appreciated everybody's input and willingness to openly share. I'm looking forward to really strengthening relationships between staff and this commission, between this commission and the City Commission and other city entities and commissions and committees and things like that. I'm excited about the direction that we're kind of pointed towards. I don't think this is going to be something like, like Chris alluded to earlier. It's not going to be a light switch. I don't think, you know, anybody's going to see a drastic change come about immediately. But I am excited about the potential of taking baby steps and moving us into a direction that we all seem to be anxious to move towards. So does anybody else have anything else they, they want to add to the discussion tonight before we wrap up? If not, then I have done dang good by finishing up at 7:30 on the dot. So.
You have done dang good. And this has been a fantastic conversation. If I could just take one minute to thank those two staff members, those three staff members. I was talking about the planners and then there is Nicole. Everyone, especially while we have been short-staffed, has filled in and worked so incredibly hard in the pandemic time, with the frustrations of the pandemic, with the frustrations of having a closed City Hall, maintaining excellent customer service with a closed City Hall, inability to meet in person and then still process the casework that Mr. Ryder's doing as Development Coordinator. And Whitney's helping us with, from Charlotte, North Carolina. And then, of course, with Nicole keeping us all 100% on track and legal. And I, I, there's no way on God's green earth that I could have done this by myself and I appreciate everything that they're doing.
Ditto. Everybody, everybody has done a phenomenal job. So, so again, thank you, everybody, for your time. If you all do have any other thoughts after this meeting or anything that you wish to share, please feel free to do so. Like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to sleep on a lot of this and be making some follow-up calls tomorrow and the next day. And I'll be sending out information, but let's keep the communication lines open. And I appreciate everyone for their time tonight.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. See y'all next week, if not before.